Thank you.
That's several.
Wait.
Okay. Then I, oh, wait. We see that. We see.
Actually, I'm in my welcome to order Muslim. Okay.
I believe this is the one I like. Yeah. Saves me. It's two thousand like. One, if you're God, be the visible with letters being just.
Okay, boost up on our agenda, let's do a public comment. And. I'll do the problem, does anybody wants to give a comment? So. If not, there's nobody, is there anybody in the room that wants to give a public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom, raise your hand, if you'd like to give a public comment? See, okay. And next we'll move on, number three, consideration of the top of the agenda. Motion.
So if any changes. Um. No changes from what you have in front. I'll move for approval as presented.
My second.
Second for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. Oh. Motion, you're right, okay, number four, Department of Defense, we start off with the statement back before the report. I'll see Mike. Not a lot. She's still at Congress, too much so.
Yeah, he is in Canyonville.
Okay, so we got a win, uh, correct. So, okay. Next, we've got the Public Works Month Report, correct, sir?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. Uh. Details for the month of July. Um. We did spend some time grading roads, as we do, serves, uh. Uh, a few of them in the winter, during the summer that, uh. Always need extra attention, Motor Lane, Lake Grant Road, Kemp Lane, there's a new, well, it's not new, a few years ago, a new, uh, rock pit on Kemp Lane. Um, and it's that extra traffic is, we've had to do extra work there, um, it's not a long stretch, but still needs some attention. And up on Little, Little Butter Creek. Um. We spent some time making repairs, I'm on asphalt roads, I'm not, not necessarily potholes, but larger sections of, of road that, that are beginning to fail, that we went in a cutout and just repaved in. Um, on Clark's Canyon and on Sunflower Flat, we're not done on Sunflower Flat, there'll be some more up there. Um, significant repair on Carlson Lane off of Valby. There's, uh, if you're familiar, it's not a highly traveled road. Um, but there's a, a really sharp switch back there and, um, we have had, uh. Issues over the years, mostly since the navigation programs have come out for, for driving a lot of over the road truckers, uh, cutting through and getting stuck on that. Um, having to, uh, uh, landowners have had to help people get out, there's, yeah, been some rescue. And so that's been on the list to fix for a while, that is, is finally done. Um. So hopefully that, that will help there. Um, we've been out, or the crew's been out, um. Continuing to make repairs on Holbert's, uh, road signs and cattle guards around, around the county. Um, I'll say again, since we've been talking about road signs and issues, they really has helped, not having, uh. Much damage anymore, uh, haven't the last couple of months.
So speaking of road signs, yes. Fifth and Eighth. And Highway seven thirty, there's stop sign laying on the ground in areas of cemetery. Here. We just paid out it.
We just had that paid. That stop sign belongs to ODOT, but I'll make sure it's fixed.
Okay. Thank you for letting me know.
Um, want to discuss a little bit of, um. A challenge been dealing with in Lexington during the summer, their, their water, they, they typically will have a water restriction. Um, during the summer, their, their well is not keeping up. And of course, uh, Public Works is stationed there and we are a huge user of water for construction, so. Um, over the years, been working with them on, um. Either filling up a truck at night when there's more water, this year I'm not doing it at all. I haven't had issue, you know, working with, uh, Peppner getting water here, I own. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna start working on a, a way to fix this issue. I, I'm pretty sure we can't have more wells in the Lexington area. We do have one at the airport, is extremely slow, might look at maybe upgrading that. Or maybe putting one in outside of Lexington, we have property at the South Transfer Station. But it does continue to be an issue and I'd like to rectify that problem. Um, in the next year if I can, so we'll be working on that. Um, been working on shoulder rock operations as, you know, when we, when we pave, we gain two inches of, of asphalt. Uh, height on the edge of the road, so we've been out catching up on that. We'll be working on that, uh, into August as well. Um, wanted just to report because we've had an, uh, unusual number of emergency responses in July for road crew. Um. Significant animal strikes on Willow Creek, some on Sand Hollow, and then fires adjacent to the county roads on Basie Canyon, DeCox and Little Butter Creek. And a motor vehicle accident on Bombing Range and a big huge rock on the county road out, um, off the ridge on Wilden, Wilden Gray. Just a, a busy month for. For emergencies. Response. Um. Any questions, that was a lot, anything on roads before I move on to airport?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Answer, Steve, on that, switch back down to Val, what does O T R stand for?
Over the road, sorry, over the road truck drivers.
So the local guys on you?
Uh, no. That, we had a road guy get stuck there.
Right?
We don't go down that road.
We don't go down that road.
Yeah. Go look at it, slice it.
Over the road truck, yeah, typically, the, the locals know to avoid it, yeah. Or be careful, you know? It's so steep, usually, you know, you, you get, you know, the truck around the corner, the trailer ends up off the road on the opposite side, that's how sharp that thing was, so. Um, airport, we, um, hosted a Puget Sound Antique Airplane Club. Um, the fly, uh, the flying event that happened on July sixteenth, it was, it was a pretty neat event, we had over twenty-four planes that came in, parked for several hours. Um, we sold, uh, nearly five hundred gallons of fuel. The broken smoke came up and provided over a hundred lunches and, um. We had the, the sheriff's office there represented, the emergency management, Lexington Fire and the Health District. That was a fantastic event, that brought the community together and highlighted the value of our, our local airport. Uh, also at the airport on the twenty-third, we underwent, uh, the Oregon Department of Aviation Inspection. And everything, uh, was excellent and no issues. I don't have anything to report on weeds except, uh, then, um. I'll let Corey get more into detail on his report, but, um. We did fill that open, open position for the weed applicator, has tons of experience, as you know, I know there was discussions with the board. And it's just working out great. Um, he, he's. Getting a lot done. Solid waste, um, finished working on the ramps for the South Transfer Station scale. Um, now we're gonna work on getting the, the scale house moved. And still anticipate that will be operational on the first. Uh, we still continue to face weekend capacity challenges at both as transfer stations. And at the North End, we're experiencing, experiencing a surge in construction and demolition waste. Um, meanwhile, the South Transfer Station also consistently repeats, reaches capacity every weekend. Uh, we're focusing on this and continuing to explore, um, ways to solve the issue. Um, solid waste, but it's something else, are there any questions?
So what are the potential solutions for, I mean, I don't think the North, I don't think it's gonna slow down.
I don't either.
So.
So the short-term solution has been, um, the, the. Uh, the ones that service those boxes, like last weekend, at the South Transfer, they brought extra boxes and moved the, the full ones out of the way. And put in, uh, the empties, which, which did help. Um. That, I, we haven't done that at the North End that I can think of right now, but it's also a possibility. It's, you know, it's just. We're not necessarily budgeted for that, but. We can be, other solution long-term is to add more space. Uh, maybe bring on some, uh, full-time and keep open during the week or part of the week. Those are things that we're talking about with Matt. So, continuing to explore those things.
Also, um, just to kind of point out, we've had a surge up in the North Transfer Station because we've had, uh, demolitionally burned, uh, houses. And so they're taking this transfer station as a, for a kind of cleanup kind of thing, some people, trailers coming in to assist. And so that, that's led to some impacts the last two weeks. Um, also, uh, our transfer stations are open to any user. Uh, one thing we could do if we wanted to was restrict it to residential use, allow, allowing commercials to go to the landfill to dump, dump there, uh, but that's not in our policy at this time, right now, it's, it's, it's open to pretty much everybody, but heavy industrial. So, if, do we have, even have a restriction on that?
We do not, it's usually the attendants, if, if they feel like the load is just too much to handle, we recommend that they go to Finley Buttes, um, don't believe they can dump on the weekends.
Yeah, that's the challenge.
Yeah. At Finley Buttes. Yeah. Thank you, Matt, that's important information to. And so, might look at the policy changes potential.
If it's all right, uh, or I just, what is, uh, Public Works engagement when it comes to like helping with the range fires that we've had over the last week, like DeCox Road and such, explain. What Public Works, your, your, your interaction with those fires on that?
I can, I can, some.
Okay.
Uh. There is, I, I know our emergency manager could explain it a lot better, but we do, we do have an emergency response plan, which includes under emergency that, uh, Public Works can assist, but I try to make sure that, like, assisting with water, that our trucks are staying on the county road. Um. We did send a blade out on the deep. On the Basie Canyon fire, uh, to cut a line way far away from where the fire was at, uh, but that, that's how we're assisting now. I don't have the policy memorized. There's, there's policy.
Yeah, so our, our Public Works isn't trained for, uh, uh, wild, or, yeah, range fires. Use the, and the secondary line that helps us.
Yeah, with bringing water to the, the guys that go out on the front lines.
Oh, I hope you don't have to have any more experiences here.
I hope, yes, I hope you too, for everyone, for everyone's sake, we don't mind helping. Yeah, no fires is a good thing.
Thank you, Matt. Any further questions? Hey, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have our. Sheriff, Ron Snyder. The. Good one.
Ryan Snyder, Sheriff's Office. Uh, the things at the Sheriff's Office, uh, as of right now. Because it always changes, we are on the patrol side, we're fully staffed. Uh, we do have one on, out on medical leave, however. Uh, we are starting to see the benefits of, uh, getting our staff trained and getting them out. Um, right now, we only have three left in training, uh, we just, uh, Monday started the, we had the two that was in training, just went to solo status. Um, and they're doing really well, uh, we are moving forward and have a plan to move to the twelve-hour shifts. Um, by, by the end of the month, um, and that, that's looking, looking really good. The, uh, Marine Program is, uh, up and running and doing well, uh, we've had a couple. Uh, I get rescues, uh, but they were more, uh, more tow-ins, they weren't in life-threatening danger, but their, their vessels had broke down, ran out of gas, you know? And got wiring issues or something and had to be towed in, uh, the O H V Park. Our deputy up there is pretty busy, uh, putting on the safety classes and, uh, we've had a few, uh, crashes up there, but nothing too major. Uh, most of them have been minor injuries. The, uh, dispatch, or, uh, go back, pro, pro and probation is still fully staffed with one out on medical leave. Um. Uh, but they're running in full speed ahead, our dispatch center, uh, we still have two openings, uh, currently, and we are in background, or the final stages of background, so we should be hopefully down to one, one opening in the next couple of weeks, depending on, you know, pass and everything. The, uh, so overall, the, the Sheriff's Office is running pretty good, uh, we're pretty busy with trying to implement, uh, with the approval of our budget. And the capital outlays, we're trying to get those kicked off and get those going, um, so that we are completed with those before June of twenty-six. Um, that way, Kevin, we don't raise his stress level. Uh. So. We were pretty good at waiting until the end of the, end of that, June thirtieth, so we're trying to get it done before, before that this time. Um, the, we've been busy with, uh, a few major calls, uh, we had the, that most people are aware of the, uh. The, uh, I'll call it a fight on the Greyhound bus, uh, this week, uh, OSP took the lead on that, since it was on the freeway, we assisted. Um, we've had, as everybody knows, several fires, the worst being the, uh, Boardman Fire, we sent nine uh, deputies over there to that, to assist with evacuations and crowd control. And, uh, roadblocks, uh, the one down south where we called in, uh, Eric, I'd like to give a shout out to them, uh, we called. Uh, and he, I mean, they responded fairly, really quick, um, and it was really nice, it was a huge asset and resource, uh, with his speed to get there and, uh, definitely played an effect of getting that knocked down and limiting the amount of damage, uh, that that specific fire did. We, yeah, I think that's about it. On the high points, unless there's any questions?
Any questions?
I have any, thank you.
Thank you.
That was a greyhound.
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay. Next. Okay, next up, we'll be, uh, County Industries, we'll, so is that, that's.
Um. Pull it up, uh, submitted a, um, a written report for activities between July fourteen and eight, August first, I'd like to highlight a few and then open up to any questions might have. Um. During that time, we did have the strategic retreat, appreciate the mission sponsoring that and the, the participation of elected officials and department heads. We'll have a good discussion and we'll be looking to review that, a draft of that, commissions final stamps on that on, during a work session on August twentieth. Um, Solid Waste Advisory Committee attended that, there's a, uh, the providers have asked for a cost of living, uh, adjustment. We're working on that, likely reviewing that before, uh, before the commission for ratification approval, uh, in the very near future. Uh, just let you know, we're going through, uh, interview processes and covering for the H R Director. Uh, we have several positions in the, in, in the county that are just kind of uh, open because of retirements, transitions or new positions. Uh, most of those positions are, uh, nearing being hired, and so we'll be seeing several new faces in the next few weeks, uh, we have accepted positions for the H R Assistant, the new position there. The obvious Deputy County Clerk, uh, yesterday, sent an, yesterday on that. The new janitor that's taken care of, we have a new hair manager who's shadowing Sue for the next month and a half, so that's, that's a good thing. And we charm director, candidate. So. Hoping to fill most of these positions, we still have one or two that are pretty crucial, and we have internal transfers that are going on, so we'll have some additional openings. Things going on there. So. Some good progress on that. Positions both in the North and South. Um, I do want to just give a acknowledgement, uh, of the Q P R training for Zero Suicide Leadership that was held on July thirtieth. Uh. Yeah. This training was recommended by you all as a commission, uh, we held two sessions here and overwhelmingly positive response, uh, on the training. Uh, and I had employees come up to me and say, please thank you for encouraging that training, uh, they said not only for, uh, for, uh, work site use, but also in personal and other organizations, and several of them have a, uh, recommended to organizations they're involved in to, to have that training there, so it was really a very impactful training, so thank you for encouraging that. Appreciate, uh, that training there. Um. Additionally, I just want to do a little bit of shout out, I was able to attend the Ergan Watermelon Festival and the county was well represented there. Uh, the Sheriff's Office is, uh, they're always in the parades, do a great job there, uh, but we also had veterans services, uh, they had a trailer. Um, and had veterans on it, thrown out candy, and we also had the Morrow County Fair and Rodeo Queen there. And she's done a fabulous job in the, in the different parades and community events, reaching out, representing the fair and the rodeo and, and the county in doing that, she's done a great job and the watermelon was delicious. Um, clean water, uh, we're working on, uh, on those items, we attended some, uh, well-water open houses that were held in Boardman and Hermiston, uh, at the end of July. Um, well-attended, the Boardman one actually had more people attend than the one in Hermiston. And, uh, some really good feedback on those, uh, we had people uh, that hadn't been involved in any water meetings before, and the Boardman one come up and engaged several from the Westland area. And so that was a, uh, really good interaction. Um. And future initiatives, uh, on that, just to let you know dates of upcoming events, we have August twenty-seventh is the next meeting for the Westland Safe Drinking Water Community Outreach, and that will be at San Boardman Elementary. And so, uh, I'll be going out with some of our, uh, community outreach, uh, consultants to kind of walk Westland, get personal invites on that, and we will be mailing up parts again on that, we'll get, uh, a higher turn. So.
You have a date set for when you're gonna do that walkabout?
So, um, we're, right now, we're finalizing, it's gonna be the week of the eighteenth, so it'll be the, uh, you know, week before, uh, and the and so we're just securing the translator to walk along with me, just in case we get Spanish-only residents, so, uh, the handouts are in two languages, but I'd, I'd, I'd have a translator as we go through it, so it'll either be Grace or another person that already be, um, hires to help us go out and do that, so, uh, as soon as I get it, I'll let you know, if you want to join. So, uh, but it'll be in the evenings, uh, likely after six o'clock on, uh, either the eighteen, nineteen, or twenty. So, time for, so we're looking forward to that, um, and working, uh, on other items, the compensation study, uh. Uh, other items that we're working on and just trying to take care of, and we'll have a presentation on the courthouse project, uh, and during the screening later, so. Any questions from the commission?
Okay, so, since agenda, I'd like to pull you out, talk about that, just a question. I'll move for approval with that. She's the.
Uh, I second.
You can second it, all in favor?
I, I.
Oh. Mike, my only question on that, I don't know. Kevin will answer this, I was looking at the allowance that we give reimbursement, we subsidizing that, because I remember looking through accounts payable by and there was a payment to, uh, that's a strange for twenty thousand, I don't know, who wants to answer that, Kevin, Robin? About, are we subsidizing that water, uh, water, uh, delivery service?
No, it's a reimbursement by O H V.
So we get repaid on all this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, I intend motion to approve.
Uh, I move to approve the State of Oregon Intergovernmental Grant Agreement, number one, eight, six, three, one, second.
You're the second, uh, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sure. Okay, that brings us into our business items, and stuff is on the circuit course design team update, Matt?
Yeah. We have representatives from D L R, Bowden and Alliance here to give us an update on, uh, on the courthouse and do you need, can you grab those samples? Or is that for later?
Okay.
Very good.
But how will we all fit?
Well, um.
Pull, pull, pull some chairs up, uh, along with there and we'll have those speakers. Justin looks like he'd love to leave out. Sitting around the corner. Bringing in those figures. All right.
And you can share.
Yes.
Yes, everybody knows. Can you start over here, just introduce yourself, give us your title?
I'm Lori Popmer, I'm Principal in Charge for D L R Group and also the Lead Planner. Everyone, I'm Sarah Larson with D L R Group, Senior Designer there.
Patrick Gussper, Senior Project Manager with Bowden, those will be the project managers for the project.
Doug Carl, Alliance, uh, Owner's Representative.
Sammy Rupp, Interior Designer with D L R Group.
Uh, Austin Gutierrez, uh, Architect and Lead Designer.
With D L R.
D L R, sorry.
Hello, Stuart, some of the D L R group's architects.
Thank you. Give it back to Matt. I don't do it, I only want to do it.
Yeah, and, um, is there a possibility you can switch these two?
Yep. See.
So, um. We've been working through the design development phase of this project to, um. If this one goes through all the details on the design, make sure what we're looking at. Uh, working with our C M G C with Bowden and Alliance as our project manager, um, trying to make sure we fit underneath the budget expectations. And so, uh, we've now hit the point where we're right to the edge, we have about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars of, of contingency built in to make some decisions on this, and there, we're within it's the percentage, one and a half, one and a half percent of the target, uh, uh, project cost, so we're really looking at zeroing, and then there's some, still about some value engineering that we're determining on that, but we're getting very close. Uh, what happens is, is after the design development, we go into the, the, the construction documents, get those all prepared in anticipation of putting it out for bid in November and, uh, well. Bowden coordinating bids from their subs and that, and then they will give us a final contract cost for what the project will, uh, will cost, so this is, uh, this is a point where we wanted to come before the Board of Commissioners, have our design group tell us about where they got at, what they heard from you. Um, and what the project is looking at, if we get, you know, farther down the road, where making changes will be a little bit more challenging. And so with that, we'll have this presentation, assuming Kelly will take the lead and then, uh, we will uh, be open up to questions or anything that the Board of Commissioners might need.
Well, that was a great summary, it'll help us move through this a little faster probably, so you can start moving slides. You know, that's okay. So since we last saw you, when we presented the end of schematic design, we, uh, shortly after that removed the justice court program from the building. And that helped us reduce the building's square footage to around twenty-two thousand nine hundred square feet plus or minus. And that helped us, uh, get on budget, the budget hasn't changed, the total project budget's been steady at thirty-five million. And that thirty-five million, we're, uh, proportioning that out into the hard costs and soft costs, so seventy, thirty split is what we're estimating, so that hasn't changed either since we saw you last, and, um. We had the estimate from S D, so we worked through the D D phase to put together another package for Bowden to do another estimate, so the next few slides will just be our process of going through D D to arrive at the new estimate that we'll share. The layout of the buildings probably pretty similar to when you saw it last, Level One has the District Attorney on the right side in green, the Public Defender on the left side in orange, that the Justice Court was previously on Level One, so Level One's quite a bit smaller than it was when you saw it last, and that's the area now marked as unexcavated, which should, not just save square footage costs, but this site's, uh, gonna have a lot of basalt to chip out in the in the daylight basement excavated zone, so this is really helps us really minimize the amount of excavating salt. really helps us really minimize the amount of excavating salt. The building support spaces are still needed to connect upstairs to level two and sheriff and public lobby and security screening. You'll get to see um some renderings of those in the coming slides. So you know, level two. Level two, the footprint didn't change too much since you saw it last. The majority, the circuit court spaces. So the courtroom, the the support, all the areas for the jurors to assemble, public waiting areas and the holding and Sally Port. Entering up on level two from the north side. In design development, we bring our engineers in more than they were in S D. They start to move their systems into the building and really help us to um figure out how the building works almost like a machine. So this image here shows our structural engineers detail from the D D set where they've worked with us to develop a pretty attractive detail that will be this large glue lamp beam. This doesn't even describe the scale of it. This is a glue lamp beam that helps us span the entire courtroom. So we don't have to have any structural columns interrupting the views in the courtroom. And these um diagonal tie rods that are all helped out and necessary, but also really pretty. So we're actually gonna have them be exposed in the courtroom. So we'll get to see them every ten feet. And then all the other engineers that we've brought onto the project, we have audio visual and acoustics and lighting designers all starting to get more involved in um putting together their portion of the project. So the next line, civil landscape still involved. Not sure how developed of a site plan you might have seen last. The basic organization hasn't changed where uh public are entering from the south and the park, the public parking lots to the south and access to a county road off to the east there. The gravel one, a fire lane connecting the public side to the north where the staff parking is, staff entering from the north. Sally Port entry from the north uh to the south of the building where the main entry is, there's a public plaza. That's really the the flagpoles and the monument sign. You'll see a rendering of that in the next few slides too. And materials, we're starting to really look at what those are and select them. And we even have some samples that are making their way uh into Matt's office and we get to start seeing more of those. And we even brought um one of them in from the car today. So we're wanting our materials to um capture what we see as a lot of the natural beauty of the region. So the rangelands and wheat fields and the whole volcanic geologic history you have here with all the basalt.
I mean, not all the time, just.
I could pass it around. Um the the basalt is a big part of not just the geology here, but also the other county buildings. And we wanna connect this building to the old and new other county buildings. So we see that in that opportunity in capturing the tones, like the cool and warm tones in the basalt. So this is the brick we wanted to bring out here and actually hold against the buildings and see how it compares. We're trying to get um as close as we can to that, but in brick. And then the sandstone accents too will capture. So you can see on this palette here, um we have that shown and then the wheat. We also are trying to capture more in the interiors of the building. Uh and so just the the color tones, we're trying to bring that the exterior landscape onto the building, both interior and exterior. And so hopefully you'll see that in the next few slides too. So Austin.
Yeah. Uh yeah, so it's the uh main entrance, the south facade. And so uh we talked about this a little bit in uh schematic design, but the uh building is masked out into to two basically identical forms. Um the one on the left uh as shown in the the floor plans house the uh the main entrance and the courtroom above. And then the uh form on the right houses the uh administrative and office uh type spaces. And then there's sort of the central stair uh in the center that bridges the two forms. And so um it it's almost like in an inverse of the historical building. Um and as Kelly was saying, you can kind of see the uh sandstone accents that are uh around the trim pieces and uh facias and things like that to sort of uh call out attention to, yeah, the visual connections of this building, of Bartholomew Building and the historic building. Uh and then you also in that rendering kind of see um sort of the basalt rock that's sort of scattered uh throughout the landscape there.
And you can toggle back and forth between this and the other one, just showing different ways we can apply actual basalt rock depending on what our quarries and resources are that we find. So I think Matt is starting to work with us on that. So basalt boulders, actually literal basalt boulders in the landscape, or you could use them in the plaza too to be the vehicle barriers that we're gonna be required to have. So you could see how in one image there's ballards and in the others, boulders. The monument sign could be basalt, but that could be literally a boulder or it could be the staffed basalt that resembles how it's constructed on the the historic courthouse's bearing walls. No, just more more things that we're exploring. You can see variety of applications.
Yeah, additionally, if it's not clear in this image, um I don't know that we have another one in the slide deck that's more three dimensional, the full building, but to kind of reiterate that it is uh set into the hillside. And so uh this front south facade, you'll see uh both stories as you approach the building. And so it's kind of got that grand gesture as you walk uh up the plaza and up the main drive, like a, that's a professional drive. Uh and then from around the building on the north side, it's it's one story. And so um kind of a budding against the neighborhood context. It's really low and uh that that's the goal is to kind of fit into the the neighborhood a little bit better and not be so big.
Hey, and we'll walk you through a few interior spaces now to get an overall look and feel of the finishes and the design. We're gonna start at the entry and we're gonna walk all the way up to the courtroom. So upon entry in this first view, uh you can see that users are met with a daylight space that features that sandstone uh wall that showcases the county seal. And and then beyond that is the entry to the uh public defender suite. The space for queuing leads through security and really enforces uh the importance of safety and security on this site. Next slide. And so after passing through security, the entry lobby opens up into the central public public stair. Um and it's really a double height space that bridges between the two main building volumes. You can see the exterior material that we showed you before, uh such as the brick facade and some of the pavings and the salt stones. Um really pass through into the space and reinforce that visual connection between the interior and the exterior and the continuation of that public plaza to this interior stair.
Yeah.
Uh yeah, and there are designated spaces for respite, as you can see there, kind of bringing in those basalt elements. And there underneath the stair is a space to possibly showcase um imagery and historic graphics. Which we would like to work with the city on.
Yeah, like if the emissioners have any resources they want us to tap into for selecting artifacts or photography or things to put on the wall or in the space. Love to start working with someone to curate that.
I mean, there might be something you might want to think about.
Yeah.
We would love that.
I didn't, I didn't know that was our option.
It's a new option, telling you now.
Now we know where the walls are.
So yeah, you 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 might want to leave that with the specs on what kind of area we had to work with.
Yeah, yeah, it's essentially this area that the stair surrounds. The walls and maybe the space.
Yeah, we we keep kind of telling ourselves it's almost like a transient space where it's just purely circulation. Uh but it's also a place for for respite and uh sitting down and and looking at things. It's a place to sit and wait. Um and so really reinforcing the concept that this bridge is sort of for the stair and bridges this element place between the two buildings. And so this lobby feels like the plaza is spilling into this space and you're you're almost outside.
We could get something along from the museum.
That's what I thought, working with them about, you know, even if it's kind of a a rotating.
Yeah, no, and uh this is always saying they don't have a lot of space. They always have they have stuff in the basement, don't they? Or no, I don't know if they have somewhere in storage.
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunity. We'd love to coordinate on that.
There's a similar stair that we were inspired by in Benson County at a museum, and they have a giant moose there in the middle. Life-size moose.
So we've been trying to find our moose.
So then as you come up that stair and you as you ascend, that full height glazing really provides ample natural light uh into the space and views out into that plaza as we were talking to keep keep that continuation. And you can really see the the surrounding landscape, and I believe in the distance possibly the historic courthouse.
It's on access with the street here that leads to the courthouse. So I don't think you'll actually see the courthouse, but you'll be looking directly towards it.
And the bridge connects, um sorry, the the bridge connects to jury assembly and administration as you see to the left. And then uh to the court to the right. It really bridges those two volumes.
And also helps with just clear wayfinding, just having these kind of four portals is what we've been calling them is you get into the central lobby space and you don't necessarily need somebody at info desk to necessarily tell you where you're going. This uh concept behind this was just clear wayfinding with within the the departments.
Clear circulation and make the circulation really the star of the show.
Yeah.
Then you come up and go right to towards the courtroom. There'll be a large waiting zone uh that's situated outside the courtroom. Large uh picture windows that you can also see those views out towards the town and to the context. Uh the gabled roof and glue lamp beams are really expressed here. And there are continuation, as you'll see in the next image uh from the courtroom, really keep that continuity between the two spaces and creating um a monumental portal entry into that. And then seeing that this is a one courtroom courthouse, believe we really have a unique opportunity to make it something incredibly special. Uh we can bring in a lot of natural light into the space. Really work with the height and express those blue lamp beams and the ceilings and really center the space on that gable. And then bringing in a lot of inspiration from the millwork and woodwork in the historic courthouse as well. Really just creating a light, bright space for user comfort, um bringing in biophilic elements. And um a lot of acoustic mitigation as well, creating a really comfortable environment.
So after we got that far, as you saw, we documented this and provided it to Bowden for estimating. The next slide. And as we said earlier, the total project budget's divided up into the seventy percent, which is what Bowden estimates. And then the thirty percent that we're calling soft costs, which Doug, was there any more to say about this other than just a reminder of what soft costs?
That's just just a typical list of uh things that we're paying for that make that up with some contingency included in there.
Yeah, and then I think Patrick could probably speak to the hard coffee.
Yeah, so as Kelly mentioned, there are seventy percent, so that comes out to twenty-four and a half million. So that was in the target goal here. So uh we completed a detailed estimate, uh doing takeoffs, quantifying all the scope that's in there. Uh reached out to both us into our database for historical costs as well as uh reached out to trade partners in the area to try to get uh current uh budgets for the scope on this project. And so as you mentioned earlier, we're just slightly over at twenty-four eight. Oh, that's approximately one and a half percent. However, inside of that twenty-four point eight million, we do have uh thirteen and a half percent contingency. So in addition to the ten percent that Doug showed on the previous slide inside our construction estimate, we have that thirteen and a half percent. Some of those contingencies we will carry into the G M P, uh but also some of those will uh help cover any uh design slash estimating kind of revisions or scope alignment between now and CDs as well as the goal. So um and then in addition to that, uh we have put here a list of around three quarters of a million dollars of of potential value engineering items, uh which we're currently evaluating to help us get below that twenty-four five. Um but then we would have a contingency in addition to that if if we are still over. So any questions on that component?
Um I like the amount of contingents that built in. How how likely do you think it is that we would have to use the entirety of that contingency like what on an average?
Yeah, um project dependent, that construction tendency, it might slight or change slightly, but in general, we will want to carry right around that percentage into our G M P to cover during our construction costs. So that that will kind of be uh earmarked for that. Um the other ones, uh to date, we have seen, I would say, minor impacts from tariff escalation in the grand scheme of things. So uh hopefully it'll continue that way for the next three or four months and we can get pricing locked in. Um I would anticipate we'll probably use, you know, two, three, four percent of that, but hopefully uh we can give back some of that as well and not uh to help absorb if we're over or coming under our budget to help offset some of that.
Current economy makes it very difficult to answer that question.
I understand, but I appreciate.
Boy, yeah, but we certainly consider it as a walk for all of us.
Yeah, I would say six percent design estimates from the more conservative side at D D. Typically, we could be a little bit lower than that, but um so hopefully there'll be some uh savings there.
A question about the I T and this might be directed to you. We've had issues with one thing. Here in the building. With the the whole thing. Is this something that's added? If you are you, if you handle that for us too?
I I do not. They have, we have engineers, trade partners, and and this actually uh I shouldn't say two different I T systems, but
There's two different I T systems.
Okay, I'll say it. The the state uh doesn't play well with the county, so to speak. They want their own uh system separate from. So there's gonna be separate server room, separate set of servers. You guys will will have your own.
Yeah, and we're, well, yeah, we have trouble there. We want to avoid that.
So so part of part of, you know, our role, design team's role is to ask those questions, find out where there's current problems and make sure that they don't exist in in the new building.
Will this be something Jordan is already aware of? Because he's been meeting with Archie.
And the uh part of the issues that we're running into specifically with the A B uh the conferencing solutions uh and which impacts is our justice court. Um and that's is a challenge. The it seems like the courts, they've got their systems pretty much established and will be implementing those. It would be the uh any kind of A B kind of setup that we have in the in the uh district attorney's office that this that the county kind of controls to make sure. So um it's just unfortunately an ongoing the system and um and and we'd like to avoid that rather than this as we try to fix the year again once. I'll lose it, I'm fine.
So 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 it's really more A B issues.
Yeah, it is. Well, no, we have trouble with with connectivity.
We have connectivity issues as well at times, uh whether that's the provider or the actual system.
Yeah, see, that's part of it. It's complicated. It's it's who's whose fault is it? You know, people arguing with each other.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
Got all those powerful server farm sitting right next to you.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll ask, we'll ask our question. Make sure it's addressed.
Oh.
Um well, we have one more slide. Um one more. Yeah, we have um we done, since this removed justice court, we have recalculated the cost split with O G B, the state. And removing justice court has brought the amount of space in the courthouse that's allocated to OJD up to eighty four percent, which means they're going to split the overall cost at forty two percent. So the county will bear fifty eight percent and the state will bear forty two percent. We'll get to split. So as we're figuring out how much money that turns into um of the thirty five million because they reimburse for the project cost, not just the construction cost. Um that turns into um about fourteen point six million for the state, twenty million for the county. The state also pays a hundred percent of their own FFNE. So at this point, even with the new allocation of the two and a half million dollars that they just got out of legislature, the state is short on funds.
This might be a good time. Did you, I don't know if you addressed it in your court, but we got a nice little surprise from state too. You want to tell them, talk about that a little bit?
Well.
And although it's not about structure, but.
We we got a um email yesterday um saying how I read the bill isn't the way the field bill reads.
Oh, so forget about all that. All right.
Have to get some further clarification. So this number, we shut off, in fact, the one that's in the packet has the old number that shows the extra two point five million dollars. But if you read one bill, it shows two point five for for uh for court uh FFNE and then another two point five for legal match, which in my mind says five million. Uh but I, we got a uh as the EO founded pointed it out as well in their article. Uh we've got uh input from OJD saying, no, no, you only have two point five. So we have to reconcile this and uh we're having an ongoing conversation. We've asked the design team to retread and make sure it's the more conservative one. And we'd be happy to be pleasantly surprised. Uh but we're still working on this. The thing, uh one, one important thing is, is now that we have the uh the project space allocation, we can push for finalization of the agreement, that agreement underway and start asking for reimbursements as we go forward. So we'll be working on that uh in the next couple of weeks, making sure we're taking care of that. So as far as the state's side of things, um I gotta make a couple of calls with Judge Hill, uh Drake Smith, and make sure we we to have full understanding of that and uh and then we'll find us.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide.
One more slide on the schedule.
Yeah, schedule.
So I don't know for sure when we'll be back here at another Florida commissioner's meeting, but we'll for sure see you uh maybe around the end of November when we're done with the construction documents space and ready to submit for permit. Just one last check in before it goes in for permit and out to all of the bidders.
Well, we'll certainly also be back uh for final approval of a contract about the GMP's establishment. You didn't have to approve that, so.
End of, end of this year, beginning of next year. And then hopefully we can all be here at a celebratory groundbreaking around February. Then a year and a half later, again, I think we'll be back frequently in that whole construction phase. Will be moved in during that whole construction phase.
And is that occupation June or is it then there's commissioning and everything?
That's occupation. So hopefully if we can start in February, our goal will be a substantial completion date in May, and then you would have about a month to move your equipment and etcetera with the idea that you'd be operational at some point in June of twenty seven, assuming. We do start in February twenty sixth. That is our plan. Obviously weather dependent, making sure it makes sense for everyone to start in February as long as the winter's not too rough.
Just a couple of things on the timeline. Uh this is something that we've kept the fair and the rodeo uh very updated on this. We also related to the city of Hefner. Uh do you anticipate impact on rodeo uh parking? Major impact of rodeo parking uh for the fair and rodeo in twenty twenty six. They have uh decided to separate the road, rodeo and fair during that year, have the rodeo on a separate weekend. Um they they actually volunteered that. We didn't ask them to do that. They're like, we're willing to try. And so they've been very accommodating, very workable on that as we go through. As we come back in June twenty twenty seven where that's a movement, they hopefully we've gotten above or even if we slide a little bit, we still uh my my goal is to not have it impact the fair. We can use that lower parking area for the fair and rodeo and they want to uh meld them back together. And that's that's viable with a few other options of of parking uh worked out over the next year. So so that's that's one consideration that they don't have to deal with, but we do. So. We we actually uh considered this and then trying to start in late January, early February is our purpose, so that we get done in June and before the fair twenty seven, so.
Late version.
Yeah.
And speaking of the fair, we, in addition to the materials we brought, our interns made this model with our three D printer. That's a section cut through the courtroom. And we have another model. It's the full site model that's in the truck in the parking lot that we'll bring in. And we have some boards with renderings and it's all going to be displayed at the fair somewhere. Matt knows where, but so you can see more of the visuals.
The the public will. Yeah, see, see the information. And they have some posters to show the timeframe and other things, uh clippings from the presentation you had today.
Because you already, you gave it one presentation to City of Hefner.
Yes.
And you plan on doing more of those?
They had asked to.
Not just to them, but to others.
They had asked to be able to do kind of a walkthrough of the building. And so um this presentation you have right here is pretty much built for that. So we can say, here's security, here's this, this is all the the walkthrough of the public space. And so we'd like to do that. Uh I'm sure they'd like to see what the DA's office and everything is, but
Yeah.
we don't have renderings for that um um office furniture and that kind of yet.
Could I could see Chamber Commerce, Senior Center, that, you know, there's a lot and just keeping people updated.
I'd be happy to do that, Dave.
One of us, you know.
I can run the slideshow, let you run it with seniors or however you think, good. It's also also easy through Zoom uh teams, etcetera, to for us to jump in remotely and assist in that or provide updated renderings, etcetera.
Great, yeah, so roll this out to the public. They're interested. I need five questions on it.
Now you can tell them to go to the fair. There's a whole display.
They like the personal touch.
Okay, listeners, any questions?
Is there, is there any feedback that you wanted on? So you gave us a couple of options on the sod, I seen that, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so.
Well, the landscape.
Yeah, um.
It's more landscape, I suppose, um for the for the two options. If you flip back and forth, it's you'll see the
The basalt.
I I like the basalt.
Barriers.
We should be able to, the public road department, just find a couple from that spill into the ropes. We've actually touched base with them and they have a nice uh reserve for fortifying creek washouts and that. And so uh we've seen some nice challenge with it is uh reinforcing area that those boulders will be, they're a little heavier than the the water.
Yeah, not a, not a cost savings. It's a look.
Yeah, right. And the sign as well, um uh you know, having a stone there with the with the lettering on it or uh you know, kind of have a masonry thing, so it has a direct tie to the the old courthouse. Uh one of the things uh the design team brought up is saying, could we go to that quarry salvage enough to just do a sign from the original quarry? So.
I think so. And and when we did this building, I think they went up there and looked at it. I think they talked about using some of the rock from that. And then they found out that there aren't a lot of people around that do that kind of work. I don't know if you guys are into that. Not a lot of stone masons.
Right.
No.
But anyway, you know, if you want to, I can contact the owners of the original quarry up there. It's it's not far from town.
A lot of work. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we, Commissioner Peterson preference for the.
I I like that and I like the uh where the county logo is on that one. I like the brick better.
And those quite haven't been fully designed yet. We have a graphics team who are kind of kind of flush those out a little bit more. Uh just kind of showing you options of what it could be, whether it's stacked rock or a boulder or a slab or looking at doing just a slab of basalt and seeing what that could look like.
And so this is just contingent on feasibility, like what boulders are we going to find? Who's going to do it? We don't necessarily need feedback for our decision from you on this.
And the feedbacks are welcome.
I think it looks great and I'm very happy with how this looks like it's going to play out and that it's right on budget. That's so. I'm personally really happy with it. Thank you.
Questions? Appreciate the, appreciate all of them and give them this great, great.
Just to let you know, our design team will be meeting with the circuit board with Thurman and them this afternoon. My phone put up since they're free a little bit earlier, but um and also with uh uh with the district attorney just to finalize items next week. So they will be here.
All right.
Well, that's good. Thank you all. Yeah, you did very much.
And you need to ask us to listen now?
Do you have a scare?
Yes, you can go ahead and insert in the screen.
Okay.
Yeah, you can grab Ryan if you'd like to.
Okay, next up will be six B. We'll try to learn uh today.
Oh. I must have, no daycare folks here today.
To the right of taking us down on the floor. Record frame or toilet, etcetera. It's the project around this. As well as this problem. Probably. Special direction.
Hello. Good morning, Chair. Uh for the record, Cameron Mabbett, planning director.
Uh Jim Bagley, principal planning.
So uh Jim worked with me to put together the um comments uh for the board's consideration. This is the notice of intent for Hepner Wind project. It's another large wind project in um southern part of Morro County. Um included in your packet is um the letter that was sent to Dave Sykes, um Chair on July seventeenth. That also includes a map, a vicinity map. I could ask Stephen Essex to pull up a map. I didn't prompt him for that part of me. Um otherwise, otherwise it is in your packet. Um at this point, I think you know the routine. It's fairly straightforward. It's a large energy project that's approved by the Energy Facility Siding Council, not at the local level. Any wind project over hundred megawatts goes to the state. And the county's role at this stage of the process is um to provide a list of the local applicable substantive criteria. If we do this in consultation and um with a public works department, so you'll see uh part of our recommendations um also includes, for example, weed mitigation plan, etcetera, access permits, etcetera. So happy to answer any question.
So um this is really just, we are making sure that our local rules are being followed essentially. That's the entirety of what this is.
It is, and it's primarily the land use rules, but also if we have uh public works or solid waste requirements, they include a solid waste disposal planned, um access permits. Um and then after this stage, um rather than getting a permit, a land use permit at the local level, um the state approves it. And then upon approval, I think OAR three forty five says the county shall issue a conditional use permit. And then in addition, that's a really a pro forma action. We just say here here's our approval of the conditional use permit. And then we also ask the developer to submit a set, a zoning permit for each individual tax lot. So we know what portions, what amenities are on individual um tax up parcels. And then we also say you have to please do all these other things. I access permit, a road circulation plan, a road use agreement, which the county over the years has really refined. That has become um the in the earlier, earlier projects, it was really, really challenging because hauling oversized overweight loads really has an impact on county roads. So Eric Geim's in the public works office. Uh he's not here. So he's really got that down to a science. We're still working to improve the weed mitigation. They do developers do a really good job providing a weed mitigation plan. It's just getting the work done at the right time is a challenge. So when um the board is okay with this letter, the project proceeds. Um of course, Sweeney and I will work closely together to make sure that the requirements relative to weed mitigation work on the ground the way that Cory believes that they should be working.
With the commission like me pulled the map on the screen or? I I I did look at it.
I had a good question. Uh this this also establishes a SAG.
Yeah.
And so could you kind of, you know, I've seen that many times. Could you kind of give us a brief on what what rights or what what? Not that we never, we wouldn't always have. What 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 is it? What does it provide for us to do? That we that we declare ourselves to.
So I I I can do two things, what the intent is and what really happens. I I do think it's, I mean.
I'd like.
And that, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's an oddity that without any knowledge to the governing body, this state council, an appointed group makes an appointment of that governing body as a special advisory group. And it just means that um if local folks want to filter information about a site certificate through you, they can. But you know, in the past number of years, a special advisory group, otherwise known as a county board, has submitted comments and then the citing council can agree or disagree whether or not, what to do with those things. I think the intent is really good. It's like having a public involvement committee for a long range planning project. But ultimately, um the citing council and the citing staff make the binding decision about an application.
But if there was ever a deal, if we had things turned in, then when you give them a deal.
Um.
Anyway, I don't want to get.
It might, it might, you know, our neighbors to the east use that same standing and it didn't get them exactly what they wanted. So I mean, the intent is that um it's another sounding board for local involvement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions?
With that, uh I move to approve the letter to Energy Facility Siding Council staff regarding those intent for Hepner Una Wind Project.
Eight or seven. Oh, I said. Move the second, move the discussion, all the favors.
Hi.
All right, thanks, Jenny. And yeah, that's a good work to do. Mitchell County drinking water investigation. Yeah, man. The Romans were this today too.
Good morning.
Did we get you the PowerPoint for this?
Um. It's actually a PDF document of a PowerPoint.
Let me just, um my apology is while I'm looking for this, Ronan just asked. I gave him, let's see. Uh what Ronan was going to do is um here it is. No, that's the CDOC. Did you see it?
And I can just talk to him if you like. They also have a in my, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you have it, Valerie's really excited. That's fine. She will send these out. Okay. So thank you, Justin. So um.
That USB is good.
Well, you don't have a desk.
Uh it's a smaller.
Oh, okay. So.
I could just start.
Yeah, let's do that and just kind of keep things going. Um so in your packet today is the scope of work for um stage three. stage three of this project. Feels kind of funny. We're already in stage three and Ronan's PowerPoint um was to recap kind of where we are and where we're going. Did you? Do you have it, Valerie?
Yeah.
And what is in front of you? Justin just asked us to um add this cover sheet.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. So the um well, the pen that handed out was you'll see the one page is amendment number two, professional service agreement between oral county and GSI Water Solutions. Basically, just already referenced, it's already in the packet. In the packet, you've already saw documents titled scope of work and fee estimate. It's probably approximately ten pages or so. The page ad after it talks about an attachment A, that attachment A actually references the memo. It's more tied to the memo. I just said for more clarity, it's a little just title that documents titled scope of work and fee estimate dated July twenty nine, two thousand twenty five. As attachment A dash amendment number two, he's asked what's referenced in the one page amendment. That's the real the changes. And so I said, let's make it more clear. Let's just have it that way title for anybody looking at it. And it's referenced that way in the actual um the the amendment. So that's where we have sound to assess attachment A number two. That is the same documents in the packet. This one's the same. It's not changed or anything else besides just putting the title up here. We know it's referenced from this amendment. Um, that's really all we've done on it to just make them more clear. And um, I also want to reference, it's not changing anything. It's already in the packet. That's the same besides just adding the title. So we know what it's referenced to. Just make them more clear. That's all.
What? So sorry.
Oh, there she is. Valerie's got it. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, just for the record, my name's Ronan Igloria, GSI Water Solutions. Um, I'm the project manager on the uh, project that Morrow and Yumatilla County Drinking Water Investigation Project, which we've been referring to as a drinking water roadmap project. Um, and today I'm here to provide an update really on the the project itself related to the stage three scope of work um authorization to proceed with that part of the project. Now that we're sort of midway through the project, we're um authorizing, requesting an authorization for the the next part. Next slide, please. So just for context, I I'm sure uh the commissioners are aware of uh all of the work going on around Morrow County, Yumatilla County um in the basin around the nitrate issue. This project they're working on, this roadmap project is focused specifically on the drinking water aspect of uh domestic wa- uh well user impacts. Um, so you can see in that this graphic, the work that we're doing is under those congressionally directed spending uh funded project through EPA uh that the was awarded to the county tomorrow county a couple of years ago. Um, and so this is the work that we're working under. But as you can see here, it's related really to a lot of other activities um associated with with the nitrate issue. Um. One of the main things currently going now is the uh the West Glen neighborhood uh feasibility study. It's not part of this project, but it's directly related. And that's a project that Morrow County is working on uh with with other uh parties. Um. Also involved in a clean water consortium uh partnership with a more between Morrow County and Port of Morrow. So information and uh work that's being developed under this is can be leveraged by that the clean water consortium, looking for opportunities to implement uh some infrastructure, drinking water, infrastructure projects. And then the other thing that's kind of ongoing now is looking for what the next phase of funding for the for implementing some of these drinking water uh uh con- concepts and options that's being identified under this roadmap project. So that's that next box where it says C D S two counties currently um working with uh the Cody Consulting.
And that's the next item on the agenda.
Yep. Uh, so that's related. Um, looking for the next round of funding really to to look towards implementation of some of the the concepts and options that we're developing under the roadmap project. So that's just a quick uh snapshot of how this current project relates to some of the other ongoing activities uh being led by the county. Next slide, please. So if you recall, this of the roadmap project was um scoped out in four stages. Um, the contract, the EPA grant was awarded um and started uh last in twenty twenty four um spring, late spring twenty twenty four and scheduled to go through middle of twenty twenty six. So we're right about the midpoint of the overall project. Uh, we had completed most of stage one, which was really kind of the baseline, getting all the information pulled together, beginning to pull work plans together, and that was uh completed the second half of last year. Uh, stage two, which were wrapping up here at the end of this month, um involved developing the public water system connection options associated with the project. Um, and then the stage three, which we'll discuss in a little bit more detail here, is the other part of the the project where we're looking at the non-connection. So options of providing drinking water to domestic well users that are not associated with connecting to an existing public water system. So that's what then this next stage three is focused on. And that's basically from uh this point into early part of twenty twenty six. I'll get into a little bit more detail on the schedule. And then the last stage uh which will be happening in uh starting in twenty twenty six, stage four is pulling together the action plan, pulling out, we get all the information that's been developed through these first three stages and developing the action plan to kind of wrap up the 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 roadmap project. Next slide, please. So I'm gonna get into a little bit more, just a quick little bit more detail on the previous stages. So again, stage one, kind of the s- early assessment, getting the data together, work plans pulled together. That happened about summer of twenty twenty four through early fall of twenty twenty four. Uh, we set up databases, worked with the agencies to pull all the data together associated with the project, uh developed some conceptual models around the hydrogeology and understanding of the the nitrate uh distribution within the the study area, which is the La Guama study boundary. Um, and then created, developed some workshops, talking of starting to talk about the the drinking water options that we're we're looking at. We also developed a um a quality assurance project plan for collecting additional water samples, um which was approved by EPA near the end of that period. Next slide, please. Then we moved into stage two, um really started in in the fall of twenty twenty four. Uh, like I said, I men- mentioned it's wrap, beginning to wrap up. It's about to wrap up here uh this month. Uh, basically, the the work around stage two, as I mentioned, is focused on developing the connection options to existing public water systems. We also had a key part of the stage two work was collecting um additional water quality samples from domestic wells with that EPA approved uh quality assurance project plan for collecting additional water quality uh samples from well. So that was a a major effort um last fall. And so we've got that data pulled together and I'll get into this a little bit. It was part of that focus of that effort was really to confirm how the data that was collected under uh Oregon Health Authority's well safety program. Um, how that corresponds with the 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 data that we have been collecting, just to confirm um the the quality of that that data. So we could develop some work created some workshops with the cities and um other stakeholders to to look at those connection options. And so that's uh basically what we're packaging up at the end of stage two. And um, so that's gonna be put to the side as we shift gears into to the stage three of the non-connection options. Just before I get into that, though, just a reminder of the drinking water options that we're looking at. I've been referring to these drinking water options in terms of connection and non-connection. And so stage two was these connection options of looking at um connecting these domestic well users to existing public water system. So there's a lot of uh uh there was the emphasis on uh the cities in the the La Guama. So Boardman, Arigan, Yumatilla, and Hermiston were the folks that we were uh communicating with, coordinating with um in terms of connection options. So that's under one A and um one B and number two in that slide. And now we're shifting gears over the the remaining um drinking water options, which are these non-connection options, including improving existing wells, potentially putting in new newer deeper wells and then including uh additional look at um well treatment options. So that's what 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 we'll be focusing on here at stage three. Next slide, please. And then in terms of the scope for stage three, um we have our project management. We're gonna continue to do communications and outreach. Uh, we did a first part of uh a survey for domestic well users in stage two, and we're gonna continue that effort uh for the other areas um that are not for areas that are not near these cities. Uh, we're gonna do another round of sampling collection again in these areas that are not near the cities. Um, and then the characterization of these other areas and then developing the engineering concepts um that I mentioned that that are not connection. So existing well improvements, uh putting in new wells and then well treatment. Those are the options we'll be looking at uh under that task three, five. We included a task uh six for contingency tasks. The way we've laid out the scope is based on what we found with the stage two sampling. Uh, what we've seen is the the data we've collected is consistent with the O H A data that's been collected. So what we're looking at for stage three sampling is we we may scale back the amount of uh sampling that we do under stage three. And if that is the case, we're gonna do a little bit more evaluation of that. But if that is the case, that we can decide that it makes sense to scale back the sampling, the costs that will um save with that reduced sampling, we're gonna use as potentially additional engineering evaluation, additional cost analysis and financial uh sort of assessment of of the options that we're looking at. And uh so in lieu of additional sampling, we're gonna use that uh available budget to um flesh out a little bit more of the engineering and financial information for the options we're looking at. And that'll be a decision that will work with the steering committee um on the project as well as the the um Pam Tamra uh on Morrow County um side of the the project. So this is just a schedule of stage three. Uh, we're gonna be uh holding a steering committee meeting. Initially, we thought it was gonna be late August. It's gonna be likely be more in early September. And that's while we'll flesh out the the work plan for stage three, including the discussion on whether we decide to do more or less uh sampling in in this stage. Um, and then we'll conduct several workshops um over the course of the next three or four months, including discussing the the non-connection options with the steering committee um and then conduct conducting a workshop once those have been refined further and then holding um a a later uh steering committee meeting at the start of twenty twenty six, once we've got that information pulled together. And then we'll start to shift over to stage four. We'll start pulling the action plan together. Next slide, please. And this is just a breakout of a fee. So this stage is about two hundred, is gonna be two hundred eighty thousand dollars. Um, none of that cost changes the total um from the awards, basically authorizing the of the portion that we've sort of reserved and and allocated for this stage. Uh, we're just wanting to confirm with with the council, the direction that we're going and and having a commission basically authorize this this next stage. I think that's all the slides I had. Um, if there's any questions or discussions.
Non- can, uh, non-connection options. P W S. Okay.
Mm hmm.
And I and I just saw that in where you're gonna start there. Um. Are those going to be? And I'm just, I'm just, and I and I have a many group Yumatilla and more together. But of course, we're just concerned with more. Uh, in a bad way.
Yeah.
Uh, but just in our planning for what we're trying to accomplish here. Are the non-connection options going to be is one uh in one one lump uh analysis? And the reason I ask that is uh is it gonna be able to produce a the cost estimates, engineering impossible, and I know they're just cost estimates, if you know, it's on the ground and all that. Are they gonna be grouped together as opposed to the P W S? And you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We'll get an idea of what the non-connections uh possibilities might cost us so we could maybe move forward with seeking funding for that.
Right. So I I think I understand the question. So the way the, because of the sort of diversity in conditions and sort of the character of the areas that are not near cities, the way we've approached is we, I think you may recall, and I actually have a map if we need to look at it, but we've defined these focus areas uh throughout the La Guama. We had focus areas associated with those connection options. So those are a little bit more easy in terms of delineating what what um area is gonna be served by connection option and sort of drawing a a line boundary around and developing a a project uh associated with connection. The non-connection options, because part of the I mean, one of the main issues is that the scale is likely going to be quite a bit different, right? There's um clusters of areas that may be away uh further separated from other areas. Our approach is to identify almost like pilot projects. So we'll find the find a condition that um say four or five domestic well users could be served by this type of well improvement. And then using that concept, so we'll have uh, you know, cost estimate and a conceptual design for a new well and potentially treatment and say, okay, for this specific area, this is what it looks like. Here's the issues that we're gonna have to uh identify in terms of getting a a potential partnership or small system defined for that area, or maybe we don't need that, but what are the permitting issues for that? What are the costs associated with that? And so fleshing that out for one particular area, but using that as a basis, then say for other areas that are similar, that's gonna be the approach. These are gonna be the issues. And this is the um sort of then potentially being able to apply that to different areas throughout the La Guama. So we're we're gonna try to identify the way we related on the scope. I think there was four or five different sort of um concepts like that. So that will, very small, um, one to two connection options, three to four uh kind of different size so that we can um then apply that broadly. And in terms of looking for funding, there's sort of this pilot sort of templated approach that we can use to to help find those funding opportunities and what makes sense for funding that type of type of project.
So I I've got a question. We were looking at West Glen specifically. We looked at non-connection options and they were generally deemed unfeasible. Well, what is going to be the difference for anywhere else? Why will they be feasible as opposed to when we decided West Glen, none of these really will work?
Yeah, the the criteria, part of the part of it is for that feasibility study and we weren't, we were sort of on the periphery of that project and one of the things.
Just one said, that was partly Willamette Partnership doing kind of the non-engineering overview of those. And then to some extent, Meyer engineering and architecture that Matt has reported on. Um. The the non-connection option is not completely off the table because um I'm very sensitive to this. I think Metis as well. Cause we want to make sure that whatever option that the county, city, the clean water consortium pursues is what those residents want. But at least that initial review was that they're really the non-connection option for a whole variety of reasons. Cost, management, development, water rates, it long-term maintenance, and really the non-connection option is not very feasible um in that location.
Yeah. And I think there's two main drivers for that particular sort of conclusion or finding for the West Glen area. The way that feasibility study was looked at, one of the sort of key driving criteria from what I recall and the way I understood it was is there a is there sort of a I don't know, forget the term that they use, but sort of like a global solution that will work for the whole area. That was a key key uh criteria that they looked at. So the connection option, the non-connection options, if you just look at as that as one of the key criteria, it doesn't really work because one of the drivers for their assessment was, can we find a solution that will service that whole West Glen neighborhood? And the way it's set up, if you put a individual well or uh maybe service a small cluster, then it doesn't meet that criteria. So I think that was one of the drivers for that that conclusion or finding. The other conclusion finding or the other factor in that assessment, and we this is one of the things we were concerned about as we were trying to think about the non-connection option was this issue of securing a uh a a permit for a a new well. Uh, one of the things that came out of the recent legislative session is um basically a sort of a solution around that, because we weren't sure how the water resources department was gonna react to putting or secure, being able to secure a new groundwater permit for for new well, for example, in in the La Guama with the critical groundwater area. And that kind of, those kind of issues, right? So one of the um the bills, I don't remember the bill exactly, but one of the pink uh outcomes of that was, it looks like that there is a potential path for being able to secure a new groundwater permit in in this uh region in the La Guama. So that's something that we're gonna be exploring further with the Water Resources Department. But that that particular piece, I mean, both of those factors of uh opening the cri- the sort of the metric or criteria of not trying to um provide a solution for a large area, but being flexible to serve different um smaller areas is one way that the non-connection options could be more, would be feasible in our sort of our look. And the other is the the ability to get a groundwater permit for these new well uh solutions. So those are the two factors I think that we're gonna be looking at more closely on their. So those are the two factors I think that we're gonna be looking at more closely in the next couple, couple of months as we develop these non-connection options.
And also, if I could add on, uh the levels of nitrates in the West Glen area are such to a point that uh you know, the the uh some of the other options that could be used for specific houses are really not not viable. And so the proximity to the Boardman uh city s- system just makes it very uh fiscally feasible and uh over the other options. But the uh option to have a community well might be something to consider for like Estegard area. And that's, that would cost millions just to get hyped down to it, kind of thing. For one-off areas that we'd really like to do. It's, it's definitely different, uh different ways to cut the cake. A long way to to solve this issue.
I I understand that clearly, I just, I I don't wanna, I, we have so many groups dedicated to doing work here. I don't want us to be um replicating something that's already been done. So I just wanted to make sure that what we do in stage three doesn't replicate stuff that we've already done for West Glen and find out, well, that idea's not gonna work. We actually maybe already knew that, so, but I think the reasons that you laid out for why this is different uh into that question, so thank you.
Thank you, and and I'm glad Matt brought that up, because the 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 concept we were looking at for connection options in that um West Glen and Estegard area encompassed that whole area, so one of the things we'll be looking at is sort of sub-options, right, like subdividing. There's a portion because the 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 cost for adding that much distribution system extend further east into the Estegard area does make that project quite a bit expensive, and there might be a a smaller solution uh that is a non-connection, it's a small community well. Kind of separate that from from something that might be developed specific for the West Glen. So it's things like that that we'll be looking at under stage three as well.
Thank you. Great question.
Any questions? Okay. You say, she's busy.
I'm going to approve uh the stage three still. So based on what we just said, or should we reference attachment A amendment two?
Correct, yeah, the um Yep. Uh, I see the exact document you guys have.
Attachment, attachment A amendment number two.
Correct, which is actually the um amendment two you guys have also passed out. That one-page document.
Uh, did I pass that out? This is
I guess.
Which I also have the amendment number one, which is identical to the amendment number two.
What I think um, then the this amendment number two, professional services, now would be what was being asked to approve. What I mentioned is under um this scope, it referenced the attachment, they still both work. That that was in the packet, but it wasn't separated out and titled as attachment A. And so that's what the change was, so that's the agreement um on there, and then it references the attachment, which was in the packet, I just want to title that. So I believe, our motion would be motion to approve amendment number two, professional services agreement between Morrow County and GS Water Solutions for Consulting Services.
Okay. The other one didn't get some.
Try again.
Thank you.
Uh, I move to All right, amendment number two, to the professional services agreement between Morrow County and GSI Water Solutions Incorporated for Consulting Services. Second.
She's gonna be have a client.
That's right.
My uh, our chair to sign.
The vice chair sign.
Yeah, I guess that'd be what the most
We authorize the chair to sign. I agree to have the
Please second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
When's the chair, if I might, Matt, do you want Ronan or I to stick up here while you're talking about um the CBS phase two funding?
Sure.
Okay. Since we're here. Matt, I think Matt's got it, but just in case, because it, there's a continuum, it leads right into.
Yeah.
David, line right into it.
So um um commissioners, we have a request here um in regards to the congressional growth spending phase two grant that we have been awarded. Um this one um was a follow-up to uh the work that you've done in in CDS phase one that was just discussed. Phase two was specifically set up with the intent to explore uh expanding municipal water systems and um make or and uh engineering studies and and work to make those connections possible. Um as we've been exploring the West Glen uh option, there uh there's other issues around in the Love Guama, specifically around the city of Arigan. Um and um city of Arigan, we supported them with a CDS request to hopefully explore and get a new well with current issues and federal government and just considerations. Um that was denied, and so we, uh they did not get that. And um as we look at the area around here again, we have uh we, we have areas that are impacted by nitrates. Not as densely populated as as West Glen, but still impacted by nitrate issues. Um the challenge that um the city of Arigan has is it has the right to pump a lot of water. And they have a very clean well, but the way it was designed is it was very densely filtered and um they don't get the volume out, but they have the right to do. Uh rather than reconstructing that well and having the that impact on the water system, they're exploring, looking to install a new well to increase the their uh access to clean drinking water. And that would allow them to uh to provide services to the areas in the UGB and unincorporated areas as part of it. Um so we had discussed before about uh helping support them with a, with taking CDS phase two and giving uh or providing funding for them on that. Um and we did that back in June, as we've went through and developed that uh and with the Senator Merkley's office and the EPA, how to, how to take care of that grant is the question. One of the, one of the options is to designate them as a sub-recipient, and then we audit and manage how all their processes are. The other one is to do a technical correction to the grant and uh just allow the money to go directly to here again. So we, so our finance and people don't have to worry about it. Um they just take care of it, are responsible for all the, all the reporting. Uh that makes it very clean, uh the project is still laying it laid out, there's no changes to it. If they were to try to change what what the uh purpose was for, it would take more or less congressional approval. And so it would still meet the means of of the of the uh the the application that we prepared, more or less, to develop uh a a test well in that area, create a humps uh site there, as well as improve infrastructure to bigger pipelines to get to the edge of the city, so we could tap into it. EPA was very uh very supportive of a technical correction, um and they did check with uh, and we've checked with Senator Merkley's office. Um they've, they've said they are in support of it. The first step of that is to have the uh Board of Commissioners sign a letter saying we're asking for this technical correction, that you're okay with it. Then we would take it to the EPA, if it gets approved, then I would anticipate us signing an IGA with the uh city of Arigan to make sure that they agree to allow us to connect uh to the system once it's uh, once it's established and taken care of. And so we are asking for the Board of Commissioner's support in uh making a technical correction and uh read the letter that was attached uh to change the um the more or less designated recipient of CDS phase two funding to the city of here. They don't do that lightly, I usually don't like giving away money that's designated for clean water uh development, but in this case um this sets us up that the city of Arigan can be a valuable partner and set us up in much the way that we're using, doing the West Glen um exploratory and and it does help their residents within the city as well. Um, anything to add here too?
Um, I realize this is just a process thing. They didn't move, they stayed here, so I'm gonna Hey, you had the chance to take off. Uh, hey, I noticed here, Tamra, you're not on the side off on this, but just, do you, Ronan, or I don't know if you want to say Do you have anything you want to kick in on this that you see? This is, and I realize it's just process, change, you can take it. But that, what's your thoughts on this?
Um, well, I can start. Um, I think it's a valuable um partnership and Arigan and their finances and their water situation is in a much different situation than Boardman. Boardman um larger city, et cetera, so it's, it's a good thing for that, for, it's a good thing for Arigan as well. And Arigan was um has submitted a couple of times for congressional inject spending very closely aligned with what uh Matt just described to um use that money to drill a test well or a pilot project somehow to expand the city system. So if transferring that money over makes that more feasible for the city, it's, it's a really good idea. And and I'm sure Matt will stay involved, maybe Ronan and I will, I mean, Ronan's actually helping with the grant application, the revised part, so. Um, yeah, doesn't mean, I mean, it's all for the better good, right? So the jurisdiction doesn't
No, I, that's the way it looks to be, I just wanted to, since you're tuned in on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, to share your thoughts, if you're willing.
Sure, okay. Oh, besides, Matt's my boss, I better have this.
Yeah, yeah.
No perversion was used. I move to approve the letter to EPA Region Ten requesting a technical correction on CDS phase two funding, designating the city of Arigan as the recipient for one point three two million. I'll second.
Then move the second and further discussion.
So I'll just make the comments and maybe they're unfounded, but with the way things are being canceled at the federal level, I'm not gonna say that I don't have concern that this is set this up that this may get drawn and way or not people go through because we're changing it, and like I say, it can be completely unfounded, but because it is being changed, you know. You know, I guess that's just a concern that's back in my mind, I, I agree with everything that we're forward with it and all the reasons. It's just, and it's probably an untung. So you want to take a crack at that? I've got Nick's response on that. So that was one of the questions we had with uh Nick DeCody and uh Jessica, he's with the, in fact uh the Senator's Office asked of saying, where are you at with phase two application? Get it in, they aren't canceling applications, but they are looking for free money that's just sitting out there and pulling it out. So part of this issue is that we're trying to do is get this application submitted, approved, so it is locked in. So it can't be pulled out without an act of Congress on that. So that's one of the reasons we're doing this, uh it's committed to us by previous act of Congress, so it's there. But um I mean, they're getting creative at levels, but right now, what we're seeing at federal level, they aren't canceling contracts, these type of things, but they are sure looking for spare money. So uh the both the Senators, uh both Senators' offices have said, it safe art, so in a way, this this actually makes sure we get it rather than possibly having it disappear in the future. I just, you know, with change, but going for an amendment this, but to me, what may trigger it, but we're gonna take that chance, not really unfounded. So the next comment is said and you know, just to let you know, the uh technical change only has to go through EPA and approval by the Senators. We, the Senator's Office has reviewed it, says it doesn't need to go any further, so there's no congressional action that's required. We changed the the scope of the project substantially, it would have to go back to that issue and we want to avoid that, because then it would be so then something really different is um getting the IGA with the city of Arigan, I think that's important and making sure that it's clear that I think I've heard Aaron talk about, or maybe sent something out about expanding the UGB along ways that that'd be the only time that he'd be interested in serving water and not interested in broad expansion. I'm sure that the people that are outside the area are not being interested in that too, so. There's an, Tamra could probably talk better on that, that's not our intent. We don't have to have the UGB expanded to provide water. If we're considering waste uh water, that would be what we just have to require that. Right now, we are worried about Morrow County unincorporated residents.
Yeah.
And so my, I'm not touching the UGB at all. So that's one reason why we want to get the IGA, so it's not, because Aaron would love to do that.
Yes, yeah. And I'll, I'll just respond, Matt's exactly right, I'm glad you raised that issue, Commissioner Windholt. There was a really lengthy letter, I think Aaron submitted to the board earlier this past spring. I think it might be worth noting in the contract that the scope of work is focused not on land use matters, but really focused on the on the water issue, really, one point three million is not gonna go all that far, so it would not cover you know, any consideration of UGB expansion, that is separate from this, it's also that whole process is contemplated and noted in the joint management agreement, it's a whole separate independent process. Not that we won't be there at the table to help and to do our part if the city ever initiates something like that, like Aaron also mentioned, urban reserve, which is really complicated process that usually only much larger cities do, but that it's, it's really nice that you mentioned that for the record, so.
Comments in the discussion? I'll call for a question, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. All five minute recess. Before we go to the next time. Driving the business is correspondence?
No correspondence.
Commissioners supports, Jeff.
No, nothing really, just um Friday will be the pre-meeting. I guess that's it.
Evidence report to the uh widen, open, open house, town hall. Jeff was there, a couple of people. This is not a huge crowd, better to thought. He did not have the meeting beforehand, so there was no one in front. Yeah, I guess.
Tell him anything to work on.
Okay. All right, let's see. And we'll go, now we're going to executive session, going in on their own yes about six, six minutes, they didn't request that session, instead of the employment of the public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Level of personnel press. The media is allowed to to not report
So everybody that's going to be presenting this here in person, right? Yes. So we can close the Zoom.
All right.
Thanks, Justin.
Of all these.
I, yeah. Please.
Okay. Uh representative of the news shall be allowed to open in all in this case. Uh because all the principles are illegal. I should be on Zoom, so the press will be excluded. All member, all other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, representatives of the news media. Okay, we'll skip that. Uh, no decision may be made in executive session, at the end of the executive session, we'll return to all sessions. I welcome the audience back into the now, but we'll be And welcome the audience back into the phone now, but we'll be. Is a potential decision or action as a result of the executive session. So, we will be back into open session. For tensions. All I was needing. Back into open session. And. There will be. No, I don't know. Jump the gun.
Well, I move to approve an exception to county employee policy and authorize hiring county clerk at grade eleven, step four. All second.
Then move to second and approve the discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, is any other business?
Friends.
Starts at one thirty, if anybody's interested. Stop by, we're gonna be talking about. Solar farms. Capital improvement plan. Anyway, that's at one thirty, so with that.